Okay, we have, I know that we have Counselor Michael Carson taking a quick break. Is it okay for us to start the roll call? And we know he's here, he just had to take that quick break. We'll go ahead and do the roll call, please. Please sign in. Okay, punch him in. Ms. Holly?
All councilors present, and a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Carson, you're over here today. All right, the next, we're gonna go to the agenda approval. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the agenda? Go ahead, Counselor.
If there's no changes to the agenda, I move we prove it as presented.
Second. Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the citizen comments. We have a one comment card here today. We ask that you come up to the podium and state your name, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If for some reason you go over three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that time. I have one comment card, and it's for Shayna Hobbs.
Hello, City Council. I'm Shayna Hobbs, and I live here in Alamosa County. I'm just coming before you on the heels of getting some information about this petition to ban the outdoor growing section of our city grow ordinance. I just want to let you know that I'm very disappointed that a citizen has used this process in order to take away rights that the state has already given us. So just know that we're going to try and protest this petition. Hopefully, it will save you guys from having to have a special election, which is the main reason why we didn't present it before the November ballot last year was so, to avoid that cost and that effort on the city. So, just so that you're aware, that citizens are ready to defend their rights, and they're not going to sit on the couch and let them be taken away. So, I just want to voice my support for the people that are seeing the truth behind this, and seeing the unfairness and injustice behind it. And I hope that it doesn't come to fruition, so that it doesn't cost the taxpayers money to take this away, but also that it doesn't put that extra burden back on those citizens who can't afford to grow indoors and only want to utilize that three-month growing period that's here in the valley. So, thank you for your time and for listening, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Since that was the only comment card, do we have any follow-up to that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may have a quick question for Holly?
Sure.
Holly, I would like some follow-up. Could you give me, give us a ballpark figure of how much this would cost, a special election in the city?
So, I couldn't tell you completely. It's probably, I was doing the timeline today, and it's possible for us to coordinate with the county on their primary election. Generally, we've always budgeted $10,000 to coordinate. So, if we don't coordinate, it's gonna be more than $10,000.
How much do you figure? Just guess, maybe?
$15,000 or more.
$15,000?
If we can't coordinate.
Okay, if you can't coordinate, all right, thank you.
Thank you. The next item, we have ceremonial items. The first item is the Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month proclamation. Tonight, I'm gonna do something different. I'm gonna allow Counselor Daniels to read one of the proclamations and present it if someone's here. And then the next one, I was gonna ask Counselor V. Hill, because I haven't given him an opportunity to read a proclamation and present it. So, Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. April 2018, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, in federal fiscal year 2015, 4.1 million reports were made to Child Protective Services. And whereas, child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas, our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of the state of Colorado. And whereas, protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, business, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas, communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Alamosa, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in Alamosa, Colorado, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Do we have anyone in the audience representing the child abuse group? If you would like to just come up to the podium and introduce yourself, then we'll come down and present you with the proclamation. If you can state your name, and just tell us a little bit about your organization and how things are going, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Coleman, and thank you for allowing us to be here today. I'm Patty Lara, I'm the Executive Director of TUCASA and the Children's Advocacy Center here in Alamosa. With me today, I have Shelley Martinez and Michelle Resindis. They are staff at TUCASA, and we also have Helen Taylor, who is on our Board of Directors April is a busy month for us, because it's National Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And so, TUCASA and the Children's Advocacy Center take the opportunity to go out into the community and raise awareness about this, and also to offer help and resources for people who might be affected by domestic violence, by sexual assault, and by child abuse. And so, we really appreciate your willingness to proclaim this month officially as that. And we're gonna be, throughout Alamosa, we'll have a lunch and learn on the first Wednesday of April, where we'll present more of that information, and that's at noon at Hospice Del Valle. And two of our experts that are on our staff, Shelley Martinez and Chiso Ortega, will present about the Children's Advocacy Center and the work that they do also. Just as a reminder, TUCASA and the Children's Advocacy Center are the only agency in the San Luis Valley to serve victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse, and serving the victims. And so, we take that responsibility very seriously, and work every day to ensure that victims are treated with respect and with dignity, and we rely heavily on donations. And luckily, we live in a San Luis Valley, a place that's just full of people who want to donate, who want to help, and so, things are going well over there.
Good, that's great. Counsel, any comments? Yes, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to shut my microphone off. I just wanted to say thank you. I think this is such an important effort in our community. You guys work so well with the other partners who serve families and victims, and you also make sure that people have a safe, secure place to go. And so, thank you for all of the work that you do every single day. It's hard work, but you guys do it very, very, very well, so thank you.
Okay, and don't send out just yet. Holly, we have two proclamations, are they to the same group? Just wanna make sure.
They are to the same group, but they're two separate ones.
Okay, so we're gonna let Counselor V. Hill read the next one, and then, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
April 2018, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. And whereas, rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas, child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas, young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 to 17 were 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. And whereas, on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. And whereas, we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas, prevention is possible when everyone gets involved, the first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas, we acknowledge it is time for us all to take action to create a safe environment for all. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council, join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence by proclaiming April 2018 as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
And I too would like to thank you all for the educational opportunities and the awareness that you are spreading throughout our San Luis Valley community, because the work that you're doing in our community makes a huge difference in the lives of so many people. So, keep up that great work. We're gonna come down there and take a picture with you all, okay? There you go. No, no. Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar A. Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second.
Okay, we have a question.
Mayor, before you, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I did have one, just one question on C. 1A, the Ratification Plan Commission Action on the San Luis Valley Behavior Health Group. It talked about Lot 34. Is that a building, or is that just a lot, something's there, I guess?
Dan, did you want to come up and describe where the location is? I'm looking, I don't see a map on the agenda item.
Because the minutes talked about Lot 34. Apparently, there's a, there's a building there, or?
The building is located on Lot 34 of the Alamosa Industrial Park.
So, there is a building there, Doc?
Yes.
It's an existing building.
It's an existing building on the campus, with community corrections in the detox center.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, you're welcome, sir. We have a motion, did we have, did I hear a second by any chance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. All right, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item, we have regular business, a presentation from outside, an outside agency, sponsorship request from Society Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. As they make their way up to the podium, I just wanted to provide a little bit of background. I think everyone knows about Society Hall and the amazing contribution that they've made to our community, all through fundraising and volunteers and that type of activity. When we've done our outside funding during the budget process, it was recommended to this group that they come back to council during a sponsorship request, and so I just want to make sure everyone remembers those conversations, and that's why they are here tonight. The other piece from a background perspective is, in your fiscal budget, council has $10,000 in the sponsorship line item. You recently awarded $3,000 of that to the Child Abuse Prevention Carnival, which leaves about $7,000 for consideration of this request or other requests. And with that, I'll turn it over to your presentation.
Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate the opportunity, and we certainly appreciate the sponsorship program that the city has, and allows us an opportunity to request funds to help us with our fundraiser in September this year, to help us, we're titling it right now Burn the Mortgage, trying to get rid of our mortgage so that we can offer more to the community. I think if I was in the audience, I would say, why should you give them $5,000 to help them with the fundraiser? Well, I think it's easily answered. I think we've made the community a much more vibrant community, a much more engaged community, a healthier community. And what I'm finding so fascinating, Don mentioned this when we first started, he said, you know, this is such a great facility, that we'll have no problem filling it up with people who want to perform there. And that's exactly what happened. The schedule I've given you now isn't our full schedule, we're booked all the way through October this year already. We are gaining national recognition for musicians and other artists. Last year, we had 35 events at the hall. Not all music, we had the Southern Colorado Film Festival, a three-day event there. We had a, the year before, a political, well, I think it was last year, was last year an election year? No, it was two years ago. We had an introduction of the candidates. We do a lot of community safety meetings there, for neighborhood watch and things like that. We had a broadband meeting there, as well as our music venues. And we'd like to be able to list the City of Alamosa, the marketing district, as I mentioned in the cover letter. Heather, did they all get a copy of that?
It was attached to the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, it was attached to the agenda, what you sent us.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to have the City of Alamosa alongside with the marketing district to be recognized in all of our advertisement and publication of the event. We're expecting, this is our second year, we've done the outside, where we have alternating stages, we use the city stage, I might, I, I'm sorry. I've mentioned it in the draft of our cover letter as the Don Richmond Memorial Stage, and Don, of course, pointed out that he's still alive, it's not quite a memorial stage yet.
Nobody remembers that, anyway. I still have, I still have a newspaper article.
There you go. It's actually the, I think, Don Richmond Commemorative Stage, something like, yeah, but that was kind of a, but we have a, so we have live music outside, we block off the street, and then we have an alternative act inside, so that we can keep the show going. There's nothing worse than having people standing around waiting for a new setup of the band. That worked out great last year. We probably had close to 1,000 people there, all said during the day, and certainly, at any one time, 250, 400 people, something like that. It was a great success, and we're hoping this year we can do this again. And again, with the city's support, it would be great for the city to demonstrate that they're supporting the saving of this building, the renovation of this building, and adding an additional dimension to what people can do here in Alamosa and go out. This past month, we've had a lot of competition. All of the bars had live music. They were all packed, and we were too, which is, I remember what Flats Louhelen told me years and years ago, when, I think it was, it wasn't the Ruby Slippers, precursor to Ruby Slipper, and I said, is that gonna affect your business? And he goes, hey, the more places there are for people to go out to, the more people will go out, and the greater opportunity they'll come to your place. So, with that, any questions from the council that any of us might?
Counselor Hensley, then Counselor V. Hill?
So, I was lucky enough to be on the marketing district when you presented there, and I asked you a question there, which I think everybody will find interesting, because how close you are to actually getting your mortgage paid off. So, do you mind sharing a little bit on that?
Sure.
Because I was actually, thought that was really exciting.
Yeah, we originally borrowed $60,000 to purchase the building, and we're in our third year now, and of course, if you have a mortgage, you recognize first three years are nothing but interest. We're down to about $58,000 on the principal. The bank has made all of their money on the interest, and now we really want to start whacking away at that principal and try to get that out from under us. But thank you for that.
Counselor V. Hill, and then Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Pete, can you, I have two questions for you. Number one, could you tell us the condition of the building that it was in, and how all the work you've put into it to make it how it is, the awesome facility that it is now?
Sure, sure. When we purchased that building, there was 247?
68?
268 fixed seats, sloping floor, auditorium-style, a very small stage, because the only thing they really used it for was Sunday service. And this was the Christian Science Church. It had a restroom, one restroom, very small, and you can imagine, the building was built in 1920, somewhat out of date, and a cupboard, a janitor's cupboard, if you will. So, what we've done is, we, first of all, put in two ADA-compliant bathrooms. We enlarge in the stage, we took out about, not quite 100 seats to have the concession stands. As you know, we have a beer and wine license, so we have two concession stands. We enlarge in the stage, we also now have cup holders on the chairs for people, that was a great piece of work. We put in ADA-compliant ramps, both for the back door and for the front door. We've put in a new roof, we've replaced the stairs, or actually modified them on the outside to make it easier for people to come up. We've invested probably, with the roof and everything, we're getting bumping close to 100 grand. And of course, the sound system. The building had great acoustics, and the sound system, we got, we got great advice, both from Don and from Mr. Frank out of Trace Pedras, who is an outstanding sound engineer. And we took their advice, and now we're buying more microphones, more stands, all the little bits and pieces that you still want to have to have a really wonderful environment, so that the artists can come in, carry their instruments in, and they don't need to bring anything else, no cords, no cables, no microphones, and it's working out really well. And of course, we did the new roof.
And rewired, and plumbing the sewer line.
Rewired, they, almost the entire building.
New roof last year.
New roof.
Lots of fixing, painting, stuckling.
Fixing, painting, stuckling, sewer lines out to the main catch.
Out to the alley.
Out the alley.
And because that building is so awesome with acoustics, I heard, and if you could comment, please, about this, that some artists who have been here over the year have thought about recording a live album. Can you comment on that?
Sure. That's, wouldn't it be great to see on the market a CD, recorded live, Alamosa, Society Hall? I mean, how much better can it get? And the type of artists we're getting, I mean, these are, these are national, national acts. Now, plus, Mary D'Amito, she had a booking, she still has a booking agent, she works with us to book shows, and they're great shows. And of course, Alma has used it, we use it for their fundraiser. We're gonna do the Cancer Relief Fund in April, they're also the fundraiser for them. So, and our crowd is increasing. I mean, every, every show, we see a lot of the same people, and we always see new people. And we're starting to really get decent numbers now, coming to all of our acts. It's, it's been really, really, I think, very well-received in our community.
And the, you know, really, the hall, I mean, I play music for a living, and toured around many places, toured around Texas, and played lots of concert venues. Tell you what, we played some of the best respected places in Texas for, you know, a smaller act. Nothing can touch Society Hall. I mean, it's amazing. It's such a pleasure to play there, because it sounds so good, and, you know, we get this, this is such a wonderful community. Everybody comes there and says, we just love this place. I mean, and it's partly the hall, but it's, a lot of it's just, you know, that's why I've lived in Alamosa since 1962. I love this place, and the people are something special. I don't know. But, yeah, it's, it's a gem. I tell you, it really is a gem.
You know, we, our standard routine with our music acts is, we do a split of the door receipts. And, you know, some of these acts we've had, I can see where they would command $1,200, $1,500 to play. So, they go to a bar, and they get $1,500, but nobody pays any attention to them, or very few people, they're playing over the crowd noise, you know, people are moving around, whatever. And so, and so I've made it a point to ask the artists after they finish, after the show, saying, so how was this for you? Did it work out? Was this, you know, this is after I've already given them a check also. And they're like, this is such a treat, because everybody sits there and watches and listens. They, we get to really show our craft, our trade. Indian nickel, and I'm sure everybody here has seen Indian nickel more than once, couldn't help to. We had them. Well, after the show, they're like, oh my gosh. Usually, by their second or third song, people are drunk and dancing and not paying attention, and they were just all sitting there staring at us the whole time, listening, you know? It was great. People, musicians don't get that opportunity to do that, to be at a listening venue where people are sitting there watching it.
And one other, the other, the flip side of that is the audience. One of the coolest things about this whole thing for me has been seeing people of the community come and see truly a world-class singer-songwriter or whoever, music that really does touch you. And people coming out in sort of a daze, like, wow, I didn't know music could do that. It was just something, something loud in the corner that you had to talk over in a bar or something. But it, it's a pretty cool thing in the community, I think, for that reason, for sure.
Thank you.
And last but not least, I apologize, I should have, this is our board, the Society Hall board, Don Richmond, Vice Chair, Ruthie Brown, who's the Chair, Lisa Absmire, who's the Board Director, and myself, who's the Treasurer and sometimes Secretary. All of us have full-time jobs. You know, we all work like crazy, yet we've still been able to make this thing go, and I think it's, it's a tremendous success. And I hope that the city is very proud of it, because it is such a unique facility to have, and it makes me sad, really, that it took so long, I've lived here since 1990, and it took so long to get something like this going. But we have it now, and we want to continue it.
Thank you. Counselor Carson, and then Counselor Daniel?
I just want to say thank you to you guys, because that place is wonderful, it's a different music experience. Chris Sardiano is a childhood friend of mine, we grew up together, he loves playing there, he really, he just enjoys it. I love watching any artist there, it's a great place. And I appreciate what you guys are doing, it does, it brings a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of seats there, a lot of people in those seats. You guys are requesting 5,000.
Yes, sir.
I would say this, we did give the Child Abuse Prevention Program 3,000, so I would be pretty comfortable matching that. Of course, it's up, you know, there's, it's up for a consensus, but I'd be, I'd be fine with match, with doing their donation, but I think in fairness, and to keep some money in that pot, that would leave us with 4 grand in there, in case we get, we're still early in the year, we're not even halfway through, so we may get approached for more.
the Board Director, and myself, who's the Treasurer and sometimes Secretary. All of us have full-time jobs. You know, we all work like crazy, yet we've still been able to make this thing go. And I think it's, it's a tremendous success. And I hope that the city is very proud of it, because it is such a unique facility to have. And it makes me sad, really, that it took so long, I've lived here since 1990, and it took so long to get something like this going. But we have it now, and we want to continue it.
Thank you. Counselor Carson, and then Counselor Daniel.
I just want to say thank you to you guys, because that place is wonderful. It's a different music experience. Chris Sardiano is a childhood friend of mine, we grew up together. He loves playing there, he really, he just enjoys it. I love watching any artists there, it's a great place. And I appreciate what you guys are doing, it does, it brings a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of seats there, a lot of people in those seats. You guys are requesting 5,000.
Yes, sir.
I would say this, we did give the Child Abuse Prevention Program 3,000, so I would be pretty comfortable matching that. Of course, it's up, you know, there's, it's up for a consensus, but I'd be, I'd be fine with match, with doing their donation, but I think in fairness, and to keep some money in that pot, that would leave us with 4,000 in there, in case we get, we're still early in the year, we're not even halfway through, so we may get approached for more. But I think at least 3,000 would be really good.
Well, I don't want you guys to end up with money left in it.
Oh, we got you, we got you.
You know, and you give us the five, and you've done the three, and that's great, and you'll still have two to hand out.
Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of the activities, the community events that you all do, in addition to the music events that you promote and have those wonderful singers and songwriters come in. But you were also the last stop on the Christmas Light Parade last year.
Oh, I forgot about, wasn't that fantastic?
It was, it was wonderful.
We got to do the whole thing at Society Hall this year.
Okay.
You know, start down the courthouse and just bring them all down, they can play music, we can do the hot chocolate, and that way, they don't have to walk all over town.
It was, it was really, really cool.
It worked out really well, didn't it? It was a beautiful evening.
And I am very similar to Counselor Carson, very much in support of this request, the really strong support from the community. You guys have created a gathering place that we didn't have before, and you took a building that I think people always wondered what was in there. You've made it look wonderful, you've made it a great place for people to be. And then, you guys have way more than full-time jobs, so you said you all have full-time jobs. We know you work way more than a regular full-time job, with all of the things that you do in our community. So thank you for, for everything and giving the time to this, this commitment as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Gregel, then Counselor Hansley, and then Brawls. Okay, go ahead.
Pete, I had a question on the money. The, the money would go towards the mortgage, or is this money you're going to take and try to lure more money in, or?
This, this is, would be funds that we would use to help put the event on. It would not go to the mortgage, but it would allow us to cut our expenses, so more donations and whatnot that we take in, will go to the mortgage.
All right, good. Thank you, sir.
And, and I didn't know, and Heather, I'm assured, assuming there's an accountability at the end, I can't just take the 5,000 and run off to wherever.
You need to have the event. It's, it's different than our outside funding that we do contractual stuff with. This is usually for an event, and we're usually aware if the event occurs or not.
Counselor Hansley.
Well, we're more than happy to provide any kind of documentation, receipts, and things like that, and how we use the money.
And the event will bring in people from out of town, certainly. It sure did last year, there was a bunch of people.
I did. I wanted to mention that we're very, very proud and pleased that the businesses in Alamosa have gotten behind us, for the most part. And I think the way this happened was that when people that started this, they, they saw this, this building and this business and so on come to fruition very quickly. It wasn't something that, "Oh, we're kind of thinking about doing this, and oh, maybe three or four years down the road, or whatever, we'll, we'll be in business." It happened very quickly. And what was the turnaround time, Ruthie?
I think we bought the building August 3rd. Our first event was September 17th, with Chris Collins doing a John Denver fundraiser. We had porta-johns outside with the chandelier hanging by them, and we had one bathroom inside, but no sinks. That was in September. And our first concert was in December. And that was, we were up and ready to go. So you, you don't do that when you sit back and you write grants, you know? That was one of our feelings, is that. And luckily, we had Judy Luckhart and Greg Herosavich give us, not give us, because we had to pay them back, 60,000 to buy the building. And working with the Christian Science Society, they lowered the price from 125,000 to 60, because they knew we didn't want to tear it down. And, and they're still meeting at this time, every Sunday and one Wednesday a month. So that 60,000 going to Savings and Loan was pretty fabulous, because then, like Pete said, 100,000 worth of all the improvements, then we could borrow the money, and now we just want to pay it back. So we, we just don't want to be in debt. We want to be able to say, "Hey, this is, this is ours, this is the community's," and it's just pretty, Don, Donnie told us, we would have no idea how many people would want to play at Society Hall. And, and it is fabulous. It's kind of like telling people, "I'm sorry, we're full. How about March of 2020? What do you have open then?" That's, that's a good problem to have. So it was extremely fast turnaround, so, and that, that showed the community, you know, whether it was the electricians, or the plumbers, or, you know, the guys who put in the concrete patio, or that sort of thing. Trinidad State Junior College with the ramps was fabulous, probably saved us 40,000. That's kind of the feeling with this building, you know? It's always been the feeling with this building. So it's pretty cool. We're pretty proud.
So not only have we been able to do business with businesses in town, they have turned around and provided us with services and in-kind products and so on, in return. And we're, we're very thankful for that. And to this day, all we have to do is kind of think we'd like something done, and there's somebody volunteering to do it, and, and we're very thankful for that.
Thank you. Counselor Brawls.
And we could have you all come to the hypnotist show, and we'd have this vote done and over with pretty fast, so that's, that's true.
I think that should be a condition of this request, that if we're successful in request, for any amount of money, that all of you will come to the hypnotist show, free of charge, but you will be those being hypnotized. And we'll video it.
Counselor Hansley.
I'm just going to, real quickly, so everything you've said, I was going to bring up the fact that obviously, a lot of the services that have been done, such as the electricians and stuff, it was a partnership, and a lot of it was given and donated. And what this really just shows, I've been to a few of the events, I saw it from the John Denver, all the way through, and I've seen different things, and how far you've come. This, to me, is like a family. It truly is like that community, that family. Everybody is working together. It's just such a great feel. And so I just want to thank you, and I think it's such a great addition to Alamosa, and so I know I'm 100% behind supporting this, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Counselor Brawls, then Counselor Carson.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you on what you've done on the Society Hall. I think you did a great job. My question is, a couple of questions. Who owns the Society Hall? Is it a nonprofit organization?
Society Hall Foundation's a 501(c)(3), and they have the building.
Okay. How much did the Marketing District donate to you?
The Marketing District gave us 2,500.
And they donated last year also, David.
But this is a first-time request to the city, right?
That's correct.
And I think the maximum the Marketing Board does is the 2,500, correct? That is, that was the maximum amount that, for that type of request?
Yeah. I, I mean, seriously, I mentioned, I'd love to see a big banner, and we can get Gene at A&amp;L Coors to make one up, you know, sponsored by the Marketing District and the City of Alamosa. I think that would be very, very nice. There'd be a lot of press out of that.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Cars.
I was actually going to retract my earlier statement and say that we just go ahead and do the five, especially since Marketing did 2,500 last year, we'd be able to catch up to them. If there's a consensus of that, I don't know.
Do I hear six?
No, no, you didn't hear six. You said nine.
Counselor Gregel.
It is, it is a good program, and please understand where we're at, because we still got several groups coming to us, and we only put that much money away, you know? And just as the city manager says, we're allowing this, because you, you came the last time, and we weren't able to, to deal with you now, so now, we could probably help you out, you know? And what I, and I always come out and say that, we use this money as seed money, okay? You know, we will lend, we'll give out so much, and then allow people from there to build it up, instead of giving it year and after year. So I, I agree with a 3,000, 2,500 a match, or 3,000, you know? And that still gives us an opportunity to, there's several, I know that there's, from the top of my head, there's about two or three more groups that's still going to come to us and ask for some monies, and I hate to say that we're out of money, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hansley.
So my question is to, is that if we did something like 2,500 or 3,000, could we also help out potentially with things such as, that what they have on their budget that they would get from us, such as, I would assume some of those licensing fees are from us, and also the stage, et cetera?
I don't, is there a stage in this?
Well, I'm just, it says 1,250 for tables, stage, tents.
Is it the city stage that you rent? It's, it's up to council if you want to, if you want to do something like that?
And last year, we were going to use the city's tent, but because we were setting up on the street, instead of on the grass, we would have had to bring, I think, 16, 500-pound concrete, 1,000-pound barriers. There's a chance we'd, we'd ask to use the city's tent, if I can get a couple friends to bring those, those size of weights in. And, and also, you know, part of that money, we may have to say, "Hey, for 500 bucks, will you bring 16, 1,000 weights in, so that we could use it?" Last year, J&amp;J Rental donated the tents and helped us set them up and take them down, but you never know where a business is going year to year, so we can't count on that right now, we're, we're not that far into it, but there, there would be that chance, we would ask to rent or use the tent.
So, I, you know, from a staff recommendation, if you want to coordinate something in regards to the amount, and have us waive, if we can, any of the licenses and fees, I need to make sure that there's not, we cannot waive those.
Yeah, I don't think...
Is that for liquor licensing?
I don't, I don't think we can waive the...
Okay, that's what I wanted to be careful about, about, okay, but...
I mean, I would like to, and I'm sure you guys would like to, but I don't think the state would be very...
Okay. And so in regards to the stage and the tent, we just, you know, we always give you the, there is the value, so just make sure you're taking that into account, and when you're, when you're doing that, when we show the in-kind.
We would be greatly appreciative of any in-kind, of tables, chairs, stage, tents, whatever it might be. That would be wonderful.
I too, would like to thank you all for the wonderful work you've done with that building. I had the opportunity to go to the building right after you purchased it with Ruth, and had a tour of it, and then I've been to concerts, comedy shows, and also, I believe, the Christmas caroling that happened this past December, which I thought was amazing, to see all of the people from the community come into that, that venue, and enjoy the music from the entertainers. So that was really great. So I appreciate everything that you all do, and just keep it up.
You know, as I mentioned, this year, we could have a Santa, you know, they could come up to the stage, sit with Santa, have a picture taken, go off the other side, you know, "Come on, keep them moving."
Counselor Gregel.
If you're ready, Mayor, I would go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and donate 2,500, plus, we waive the, what is it, 1,000?
Well, not all of it.
Yeah, yeah, no, you can waive all of it.
I just, as staff, if you can be specific, because we're not necessarily going to be involved in setting up everything, so if you can be specific on, do you want the stage and the tent, or just the stage? So if you can be specific, that way, we're managing expectations and, and all of that.
Probably the, the stage, and the tents also something?
Yeah.
Stage and the tent.
And I think, didn't we get chairs, tables last year from you?
Two. No, we all, I think we got tables and chairs someplace else. Or two from, not many from you, but we have another source.
That's my motion. Because that, that would bring it up to almost 3,000.
So you got the 2,500, I just want to make sure, before we have a second, 2,500, the tent and the stage. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay, I have a comment from Counselor Veale.
Well, there's, there's a motion on the floor.
Okay. Have a motion? Do we, do we have a second? Okay. All right.
So I don't want to second it, I'd actually like to bump it up a little.
Okay, so we're going to have discussions.
Okay.
So we don't, do we have a sec? If we don't have a second, we're going to have to end it, right, and then do another motion.
It dies for lack of a second.
For lack of a second, okay?
I, I would also, kind of what Mr. Carson said, go up to five, but I don't think there's enough support up here for 5,000. But I would like, if we can go up to three, 3,000, I think would be good. Because we're going to have a couple groups coming in at the end, like the rodeo, and maybe the barbecue people in August or September, and maybe something else, so.
And does that include the tent and the stage as well?
All right, so do we have a new motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any discussion? No? Okay. All righty. Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I love to see government working. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And we'll see you guys for the Hypnotist comedian. We'll make sure we, you guys get up on stage and get hypnotized. Come out to any show.
Thank you all for everything you do, appreciate it. Okay, the next item is business brought forth by city staff under finance.
So as Judy makes her way up, as you know, we try to budget fairly leanly, and, and to keep it very tight, but as we go throughout the year and we see changes, and some of these are exciting changes, when they're working with grants, we need to make sure we're amending the budget. And Judy, if you want to go ahead and walk us through this, that would be great.
Okay. This is Resolution Number 8, 2018. And I'll just go through these rather quickly, if you have a question, just stop me and we'll discuss it. And the general fund revenue, we were able to secure two grants that'll go into the general fund, 100,000 for the downtown master plan, engineering and architecture, that type of The 97,476 is money that we had put aside for capital improvements, that we're moving from the Capital Improvements Reserve Fund. The 200, or the 2,000 was a grant that Jolene got for the Artscape project from the local Marketing District. 3,000 we're moving from Enterprise Fund to the general fund to help pay for a diagnostic scanner for the city mechanic shop. And then, the 4,000, 433,639 is the, this 2018 revenue from the LEED grant. Community, and Community Rec. Andy's been working hard, getting a lot of grants there. We have 25,000 for work on revitalizing the Rio, that's for the work on the river corridor. The 25,000 from Caja is specifically for the ice rink, that's from the Colorado Hockey Association. He got 5,000 from the local Marketing District, District for the Ice Fest. We got a 1,500 donation from Excel on Monday for the ice rink, but I put it in there because I knew it was coming. From the fund balance, there's 37,125 that we collected actually in 2017, but the funds were specifically for the ice rink. So that's, it's a 10, the Daniels Grant. We got an extra 10,000 over and above what they had originally promised. And then, we had 27,125 in sponsorships and donations from local people that went through the enterprise zone, most of it. And the Conservation Trust Fund, they got a grant, a 3,000 grant from the Tree, Colorado Tree Coalition. This was work from the Tree Board, I believe, is how we were able to secure that money, and it's, it's specifically to plant trees along the airport corridor on South State Street. Then, on the sad side of things, I have expenses to offset the revenue, and then a little extra more. The first item is the LEED grant, and those, I'm assuming the expenses will match the revenue, that's the thought process, anyway. The next item, and we had a para audit last August, and it was discovered that we were supposed, the city's supposed to pay an additional retirement, is for the para's medical program, for retirees, they have like an insurance for people that don't, aren't on Medicare, Medicare yet. Anyway, that, that goes for the, that's the AED and S A E D. And the only two people that this applies to right now is the city manager and myself. So hers, her, so we had to go all the way back to 2014, and pay all the back, that back amount that we owed, so that's the 19,000. So that's the $19,604.
And just to jump in, the reason it's only our positions is we are not on para, so that's why we were not making those contributions. But even though we're not on para, the audit has identified that that percentage still needs to get paid. So it's not the full para percentage, it's just for the AED and S AED. But that's what that audit found.
And that's the 3.7% of the para match that the city makes for all of its employees. The 10% is actually the retirement, and then 3.7% is for the AED and S AED portion.
Did you say 19,000?
Yes, 19,604. And that's, represents that portion since 2014.
So is that the, should that number be in place in the 21970? Is that? On this, it says 21970.
Oh, and the summary one, it's just, they're combined. It's the two, I believe.
So the one you're looking at has the finance and the city manager combined. She's going through the ordinance. So the first line item is for the city manager. And then if you go two down, there's 2,366 for the finance. So in the cover letter, it's combined. In the ordinance, it's separated out. Okay, sorry, Judy.
Oh, that's okay. The 53,000, we got notice, we met with the insurance company in September to get a feel for what we would need to budget for, for '18. And they said, oh, your premiums will stay flat. And then in December, oh, wait a minute, we're going to raise you $53,000. So that's what that is. But we actually had a hard time getting insurance because we've had some large claims and they had a hard time finding anyone to insure us. So we just went ahead and said, well, okay, 53,000. But we did get a refund from workman's comp also in December for 39,000 from an audit that they did in 2015. So it kind of offsets part of it, but it's still painful.
Part of that, as we explained to council, when they go back, it's almost eight years that they're looking back on some of these claims. So we had had a shooting that, an officer-involved shooting that that included. It also included the alleged theft from Amanda. It also included where we had the citizen hit the paint machine and injure two of our employees, damaged the machine and all of that. So when it's, thankfully, it's this insurance thing where workers' comp that we've had a little bit more control over and have a safety program. We did get a rebate of, what was it?
39,000.
39,000. The other one is the other risk insurance where they go, but hopefully, those, some of those will start to roll off and we can see some improvements there.
The next one is the expense for the DOLA downtown, the grant for the downtown master plan and the Artscape program. The next one is, and it goes into the IT budget. And part of the DOLA grant that we got back, IT took money out of their reserve fund last year to help pay for the cabling, for the fiber optics and telephone lines to go to, I think the telephone lines too, to go to the cemetery building because that wasn't in the budget. And so they took it out of their budget to pay for it. And so that reimbursement was, DOLA agreed to let them take that much out of the reimbursement to go back into their fund. They bought a server, a backup server, from their reserve fund. And the 28,333 from the capital improvement, also from the reserve fund, is to go to buy MDTs. MD, I don't know, there's MDTs and MVRs, and I get it mixed up. But it's, they're radios for the police department. Instead, they were putting money in reserves and they were going to buy them all at once. But instead, Jim suggested that they start buying, or Dwayne, I'm not sure, one of them, or maybe they put their heads together. But now they're going to buy them in a rotating basis. So instead of all of them being old at the same time, they'll start replacing them on a rotating cycle so that it'll, it'll work out better. It won't be such a budget crunch. And they'll have better equipment, too. The next one in the police operations, when we budgeted for the patrol cars last year, we did not budget enough inflation for how much everything goes up. And so when they went to buy the patrol cars and then additional upfitting, it was more than we had reflected in the budget in the CIP. So that money would come from the general fund. And then $5,400 from the, from the balance, is, actually, $5,400 is from the balance for the upfitting. $14,210 is coming from vehicles that were sold last year, like when the old vehicles get old, Jim puts them on yards, not yard sale, but Alamos website, and then we sell them. And then those, the proceeds from those go into whoever fund the car belonged to. And they had enough in there to pay for most of the upfitting. So that's, it's not too bad. On the next line item, the fire truck, we did pay for it last year, but because it's not going to be delivered until this year, I had to put it back into the fund balance because the way governmental accounting works. And so then we rebudgeted this year. And in addition, Dawn had some additional safety features put on it that they had recommended. And that's the additional $14,933. That money's coming from the capital reserve, which when we saved money last year, we put it over there into capital reserve, so we're just moving it back.
And the net is we still saved money.
Yeah, about $5,000.
Yes. So it's still under.
Because we, well, we had budgeted 450, and then when we prepaid it last year, it came in at 430. So we saved 20, then we spent 15 of it this year, but we're still money ahead, so. On the $40,000 is for a new code enforcement vehicle. They've been limping along with one that was 2,000, a year, a year 2,000 truck. But the transmission went out. So the city shop, Tim suggested that we just get a new vehicle instead of putting 2,000 or $3,000 in a new transmission in a 2002 truck. So we just wanted, we had the money in capital reserves, and it was budgeted for 2019. So we just wanted to move it forward for this year instead of wasting money on an old truck. The $1,000 is from the street department to help pay for the city shop scanner. And the next item is the scanner, that it's a diagnostic scanner because so many of the cars now are computerized, and if you don't have a scanner, it's hard to really know what's wrong with them. So this was another item that we didn't know about until after the budget was already done, so. But it was just a necessary piece of equipment. In the enterprise fund, we were able to secure 250 acre feet of well water. So that's the 325,000. It was actually 375,000 to purchase, but we paid $50,000 in earnest money in 2017. So it was budgeted in 17. And then the 26,548 is the commissions for the people that found the water and closing fees and those type of things. And that money comes from that 4.3, that million dollars that we borrowed last year for the augmentation plan. So technically, that money's in the fund balance, but it's money that we borrowed specifically for that purpose. Well, this is the, they needed a recycling truck for the sanitation department to, for the recycling center. And it was actually budgeted in 2017, but they weren't able to purchase it then. And so they had $30,000 budgeted, and last year, they had 7,000, well, actually, they had about $10,000 in savings in their vehicle repairs line items. So they wanted to use $7,114 of that to go ahead and pay for this, the sanitation recycling truck. And it's not like a garbage truck, it's just for the guy that runs the recycling center to use. The 269,800 for the UV system, you approved, I don't know, a couple, three weeks ago. So that's going forward. Hopefully, we'll get that done here pretty soon. And then the $1,000 is for, to send to the general fund for the diagnostic scanner. And the capital improvements, we've gone through that. It's all the money that comes from that reserve fund goes to the different funds. Most, I think all of this went to general fund. And the conservation trust is the $3,000 that we'll spend for the trees on South Street, on South State Street. And the community rec, $40,000 was budgeted in 17 for the walking track at the rec center, but it wasn't, we weren't able to complete it last year, so we'll do that this year. And then 240,000 was budgeted for the ice rink, but it's, it was a work in progress at 1231. It wasn't completed, but we estimate that we still are going to owe 240,295. So it's in the fund balance, and we have the money, but because we're not spending it in 2018, it's a budget amendment. Then the 63,625 is those revenues that we talked about earlier that were specifically for the ice rink. And then we were able to get a grant of $347,794 to build a park at the Montana Zool subdivision. Or to at least start building a park. And we got that money from GOCO, so.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Brolle?
I have a question on the commission for the purchase of water. Isn't that usually a seller's cost or the buyer's cost?
Yes, it would be, except we paid a firm to find it.
We have a contract with a firm.
So they do the, I don't know, it's a commission, but it's not a seller's commission, it's a finder's fee, I guess, more than a seller's commission.
Okay. Counsel Viho.
Thank you, Mayor. The money that we got from Excel for the hockey rink, what is that, what is that going towards specifically?
Whatever Andy says, I guess.
We've got, we've got some punch list of things that we need to do. We're looking at landscaping. We also still have the parking lot, but we still had part of that budget for that as well. We're looking at those drop-down screens that would need to be combined with a fan. And Andy, is there any other? I think there's a few other things you had.
Signage.
Signage.
That would be it.
Yeah, and the signage we're going to do, we just didn't do that right away because we have another potential sponsor who wants to do the signage. So there will be signage. We're just not sure if we'll have to pay or if that's another sponsorship.
And even though the hockey rink is completed, for the most part, are we still hitting up fundraising with small donations here and there, stuff like that?
We'll take whatever. But we haven't done an actual another push or anything. We could look at doing that maybe when we get closer to opening it, opening it up the next time. But I think just from a revenue and fees and those types of things, we're definitely on track for everything we've projected there.
Thank you.
Okay, all righty. Okay, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We need a motion, I think.
Yeah, we were waiting on a motion from-
Yeah, I was waiting for you.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I didn't want to speak. Got a turn. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number eight, 2018.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, any further comments? Okay, start voting, please. Thank you. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Fair with me, I'm trying to wait till my screen come back so I can see where we are. Okay, up next, we have committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Okay, we have one committee report from Counsel Hensley, then we have Mike Carson, then Jan Viho.
Okay, so I went to golf board on March 15th, and really good meeting. The main thing to report, they obviously are on track, we're getting ready for golf season. Big concern, obviously, is water, which obviously is a big concern for everybody in Colorado. But they're, you know, they got kind of plans, things like that. Things just might be a little dry. So one thing is definitely, as people are golfing right now, is to make sure to use, when you're using the golf cart, to stay on the path. Do not go into the grass. That's really, really important. It's tearing up the grass. So at this point, it's, the carts have to be on the path only. They also have, every weekend has a tournament planned. So the whole summer is full with tournaments. So that's pretty exciting. And then the last thing is, they are going to have a, on April 13th, they're going to have a dinner event as a fundraiser. And it will be at the restaurant. Woody's will be doing it, and it'll be a prime rib dinner. And they've started postings on Facebook just to have save it dates. I think this next few days, we'll see the exact where you can make your reservation, things like that. But they're going to have two, there's so much interest in it, they're actually going to have two different times for dinner. So it should be really exciting. So lots of great stuff happening at the golf course.
Okay, and Counsel Hensley, I would like to thank you also for attending the SLV DRG's meeting for me this past Monday because I was in DC advocating for kids. So thank you so very much for doing that.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Sorry. So just real quickly, so this is what happens when you miss meetings. No, I think it was already planned. But Ty is also now the chairman again for another year. So he did get voted as the chairman, which I think it sounds like you had already discussed with them, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. It came to a surprise Monday night to me again, though. All right, good deal. Counsel Carson?
I just wanted to report from the SLV COG that we did approve funding for three projects that were, we were approached with. One was the LED project here. One was the expansion of Battenberg Park down in San Luis, which is a park that the kids use for youth camps in the summer. And the other one was a lighting project in La Jara. So that's just to catch you guys up.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Counsel Viho?
Thank you. Some highlights from the school board meeting. They acknowledged Coach Ramstetter and the high school wrestling team for their championship that they got a couple, about a month ago. To date, the wrestling has earned, the wrestling team has earned 11 state titles and 57 individual state champions. So that's really good stuff.
That's great.
The, the school board and the superintendent are going to meet with the negotiations team, the Alamos Education Association, their, their union. They're getting ready for state testing, which is coming up in the middle of April, as all public schools are across the valley. Some good news to report, there, every school, every public school in the state is judged, is critiqued, and they have a, and OMS was at 52.8%, and they've jumped up to 55.8% on this little score. So that's, there's improvements going on there. And they want, they highlighted the fact that the health and wellness team, along with the school district, along with the rec department here with the City of Alamosa, they had a very successful fun skate night on March 2nd. And you guys all know, there was a ton of people there. So, and there's only two months of school left, so we're getting close.
Okay, thank you very much, Counsel Viho. Counsel Gregel?
I don't know if this is a committee report, and I missed the meeting there where, I don't know if you guys talked about that, we met with the county commissioners. We had a real good meeting with them, discussed, and I didn't bring that list of the items that we discussed, but it was a really good meeting, and we're going to, I guess, meet twice a year. So, and if anybody wants to jump in and see what we discussed and stuff. But it was, it turned out, it turned out to be pretty good. And we'll continue, I guess, meeting with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Okay. Up next is staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The mayor and I today had the opportunity to do a training session with the Colorado Municipal League up in Denver. They invited us to do a session on staff and council relations. So we put together a PowerPoint and split it up and had two very different speaking styles, but I think it worked well, and I think it was well-received from the group. They also, I think, throughout the day, it's for newly elected officials, we're going to look at parliamentary procedure, budgeting, some of those other items. And so the mayor and I were fortunate to be asked to do that and represent Alamosa. So that was exciting. And saw a lot of interest from other communities across the state, from large to small, that had new representatives attending the training. So that was positive. The art committee is really excited and gearing up, even though it is-
Even though it is September, we are starting to put the plans in place in regards to that weekend in September, and I don't have it in front of me, but it will be the art scape unveiling, along with the art walk, along with the Chalka Walk, and then the farmer's market will be downtown as well. So downtown will be hopping. We will have the installation of the artwork on Friday, and that will also be the beginning of the art walk, where they have the pieces with some of the pieces inside the businesses. We are looking at maybe, do we want to allow any outdoor vendors or musicians and those types of things? And trying just to lure people downtown and to walk around and those types of things. The unveiling will be Friday night, where we have the ceremony recognizing the artist for our art scape and a little bit of musicians at that point in time. And then Saturday will be busy because Art Walk will continue, as will then Chalka Walk be at the depot, where there's going to be hundreds of kids. So we're going to have a whole bunch of different types of people downtown appreciating art. And so we're really excited, and the collaboration is going to work really well, cross-promotion and all of those types of things. So there's a lot of excitement there. There's a group of us that met with ASU, the acting president, Matt Nearing? Nearing, thank you. And it was more, we know that he's got a lot on his plate right now, and they're going through a lot of changes and taking a look at a lot of different things. And so some of us from the outside that are involved in some of the projects related to the value-added agriculture, the economic summit, the Valley Initiative program, the VIP, we just wanted to put a face to those and to let him know that, how valuable it has been to have ASU at the table from a Valley perspective. They are seen very much as a neutral site and a unifying type of force. And so we wanted to let him know that, we wanted to continue with those projects, but make it as easy as possible for him and the university to stay involved and engaged and to not tax them during this time in regards to the resources that they have. But that we still very much wanted ASU to remain a partner. And I think the, I think the meeting went very well and was positive. And we had representation from across the valley for those discussions. We also have been meeting with Excel. We are one of seven communities out of the state that they want to develop a partnership, a memorandum of understanding with, to look at where our joint goals are and how we can work together and those types of things. And so we're excited to have those discussions, and probably within the next month, we'll be bringing something before you. It's nothing that changes our franchise agreement or anything like that, but it highlights the art program we want to do for the painting of the switch gear. It looks at, if we want to look at more energy conservation and partnering on some of those areas, and then just other potential partnering areas. So it's exciting to have those discussions. And I believe, is that every, you want to provide an update? Do you guys have an update? Do you guys have updates? You do?
Evening, Mayor, counsel. Just want to give you a quick update on the GOCO Montana Azul Park. Last week, we were notified that GOCO will be funding that project to the tune of almost $350,000. Very, very excited to bring that neighborhood a park. The fact that it was the number one rated statewide GOCO project is just, it's a little bit, I'm still flabbergasted by that, when you think we're competing against the Boulders and the Broome Fields and for that money, and how competitive that GOCO money is. And I don't deserve all the credit for that, but our city does, our staff does, Pat Steenberg, Heather, you know, those that came before us. And our partners, ASU is donating some trees, the farm park is doing some environmental education as part of it. So it hasn't sunk in too much. Mark and I have our work cut out for us, construct that park this summer, but what a tremendous and great event to celebrate.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you so very much. It's well-needed in that community.
Andy, when is, when are you going to stop ice skating?
End of March. I mean, right at the end of March, we're going to shut that down and see what kind of other opportunities we'll start rolling with in there.
And how does that process look like? Does that ice melt and the water goes where?
I've been wondering that, too. We definitely shave it down some with the Zamboni, it actually cuts it. And then, you know, we empty the Zamboni. If you go out the back of that rink, you see where we're having to move snow away. So we'll take some of it down with the Zamboni, and then the rest of it, probably squeegee to where it should go on the site in terms of that block or whatever for drainage, just, yeah, it'll be interesting. Swimming pool.
And Andy, you weren't here last, the last time we had the meeting, when you had the new addition to your family. I believe all counsel want to say congratulations to you and your family, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you. It's going good. Appreciate it.
Good deal. Thank you. Okay, Heather, yes, Holly?
I have one, we'll have a couple. Just wanted to remind you, the annual board appreciation dinner is Monday, April 2nd, yeah, April 2nd, and it's at the Ty Hut. So if you haven't got me your RSVPs, they're in your mailbox, so go and check those and get it back to me. The other one is regarding these petitions. I was, I've been communicating with the county and with Eric and trying to figure out these timelines, and the protest period ends April 9th. So with that, that's the 40-day time period. The county needs certified ballots by April 27th, I believe, which, if we can get an IGA to you on your April 4th meeting for first reading, we can possibly coordinate on their primary election. Eric did have a concern that he, that the ballots would only go to Republican and Democrat parties, but this year it's changed. They're going out to unaffiliated parties as well. So it's possible to coordinate on their primary. So I'll bring an IGA before you on your April 4th meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Holly. Any other staff announcements? Heather?
Not that I'm aware of, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to add to Heather's comment. She and I did have an opportunity to go to CML today, and I tell you, Heather did a really spectacular job on creating the PowerPoint presentation. She got a major compliment from Sam Mamet in regards to the way she prepared it, because it was entertaining as well as informative. And I put PowerPoints together often, but I've never seen one as funny as hers, the way she added that sense of humor to the learning environment as well. So thank you, Heather. Okay, counsel comments. Ms. Daniel?
Thank you. So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for the retreat that we had over the weekend. You guys did a wonderful job preparing things for us and being there, and I really appreciated all the energy and learning our colors. I appreciated that, what we gave as well. I think everyone probably saw in the paper today, but the Boys and Girls Club has a new executive director in Aaron Miltonberger. Very excited about having him on the team over there. I think it's going to be with the collaboration the city has with the Boys and Girls Club. I think it's going to be a great addition. I have been informed that there is a youth hockey association fundraiser this Saturday. I heard it's pancakes out at the rec center, out at the hockey rink. And so if you want to eat pancakes and support youth, go out there. I think we're going to run there, so I don't, I can eat pancakes. And then there are several city staff next week involved in a leadership on the ground activity, a two-day, what's it going to be, a long-term kind of leadership development project. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate our team here, looking for local opportunities and finding resources to network, not only with people across the state, but also finding things here that are affordable and useful and can really develop our leadership skills internally. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Vehil?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I have three things. The first is, because it's been so dry, we had such a dry winter, and with summer coming up and people starting watering their lawns and that, I think it would be in our best interest of the city to get ahead of it, because there's no water in the forecast, folks. And if we start maybe coming up with some things just for this summer, even numbered addresses you can water on these days, odd number of dresses you can water on these days, just to be responsible about this thing. I remember Liz talked about growing up in San Francisco. I grew up in El Paso, this is common practice, just something to think about. And then at our last meeting, I thanked all the local high schools for all the basketball and wrestling tournaments they've put on. And I forgot to mention, and someone pointed out to me that night, at the science fair, they also had a big event at Adams State about three weeks ago, and also had like 400 kids at Adams, and that's some economic development in the middle of winter as well. And then the third thing was about this marijuana petition that's going around for the outdoor grows. I appreciate, Holly, that you're trying to get that on the coordinated election with the county. And I just want people to know that if it doesn't get there, if it becomes a special election, this is going to cost the taxpayer 15 to 20, maybe even more, 15 to $20,000 or more of your taxpayer money to get this on the ballot. My personal thoughts are, is that we, we as a council did our due diligence and worked hard on this, listening to everybody and all sides. I think there are some safety concerns, that if we keep it inside someone's house to grow it, there's electrical concerns, fires, that type of stuff. And I go back to what Chief Oak said about when someone asked him last summer if anybody, if there were any issues with these indoor, outdoor grows, and he said, no, not really, just a couple here and there. So I just want you all to know that, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehil. Counselor Gregel?
Two comments on what Counselor Vehil said. Even on the, if we put that stuff on the ballot, we weren't going to put anything on the ballot this year. Were we, it's still going to cost us, what, about $10,000?
Yeah, it'll, it'll still cost us.
So irregardless, if we put it now or later, it's still going to cost us $10,000.
Later, later means I can't coordinate with the county, and I have to do it all internally through my office.
So it's still going to cost us. Also, on your, on the water deal, the round table plus the different boards, water boards, they're going to be putting out stuff on how to conserve water and stuff because of the water problem and stuff that we're having. And then finally, I want to wish Ruth Heidi a happy birthday. She came, she's here taking her birthday to take care of us, so let's wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Can we sing her happy birthday real quick, if we don't mind? If you don't want to do that? All right, ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ruth. Happy birthday to you. And many more. Thank you. You're welcome. All righty, okay. And final, I just want to have one counsel come in. I want to thank Counselor Vehil and Counselor Daniel for reading the proclamations and presenting them tonight. My goal is to make sure that every council member have an opportunity to present a proclamation. So I will be calling on the rest of you throughout the year. So thank you so much for that. Okay, so next, we need a motion for the next executive, to move into executive session.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-4-4024E.
I second.
Motion and a second. Please start voting. I think we're missing one. All right, good job. Okay, we're moving into executive session.
The motion carried unanimously.